Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 23rd, 2019 Town of Scarborough Planning Board Meeting. You could all rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doreen, could you please do the roll?
Nicholas McGee.
Here.
Rachel Hendrickson.
Here.
Roger Beely.
Here.
Robin Saunders.
Here.
Richard Duperry.
Here.
Jennifer Ladd.
Here.
Rick Minkin.
Here.
Thank you. We've got a full board this evening. Approval of the minutes, September 3rd, 2019, those were sent via email to everyone.
So moved.
In a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Close discussion, all in favor? I'm sure that is unanimous, thank you. First item on tonight's agenda is A+ Tents and Events LLC requests an advisory opinion for a miscellaneous appeal for an expansion of a non-conforming use, 370 Payne Road Assessors Map R38 Lot 5. Jamel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this is located in the B3 zoning district at 370 Payne Road. So the applicant's applied for a miscellaneous appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals for an expansion of illegal, non-conforming use, as single-family dwellings are not in allowed use within the B3 zoning district. In accordance with the zoning ordinance, before making a decision on any miscellaneous appeal, the ZBA shall refer the appeal to the Planning Board for an advisory opinion. The advisory's opinion should be based on the non-conformant standards found in the zoning ordinance. To the applicants proposing to build a 1,800-square-foot garage to be used as an accessory to the existing residential structure. And staff has reviewed the materials provided and provided the board with several comments for your consideration, including building design, stormwater controls, and proximity to the shoreline zone. The applicant should be sure to discuss these with the board tonight. That's it.
Thank you, Jamel. The applicant, just introduce yourself and the project, please. Thank you.
Good evening. Jason Haskell with DM Roma Engineers. Here to talk to you tonight about the 30-by-60 residential garage expansion to the 370 Payne Road. Here with me tonight is Mark Tibbetts with A+ Party Tents and Events, the property owner, and he'll be available for any questions as well. The property currently contains an existing single-family house, which is used as a rental property by A+ Party Rentals, or A+ Tents and Events. At the time of the construction of this single-family house, it was actually in allowed use, but over the years, it was rezoned into the business B3 district, making this a non-conforming property. The applicant is now looking to construct a 30-foot-by-60-foot, two-story garage with carport, overhang, which will be accessory to the house, which will be used for storage for the tenants, and to make it a much more attractive feature to any future, potential future tenants. As I previously stated, the single-family residential use is not allowed in the B3, so to extend the residential use, it will require the ZBA's approval as a miscellaneous appeal. As in this rendering, the architectural design is more or less like a rustic barn with the gambrel roof, with the working, I guess it would be the hay, the hay-style doors on the second floor. And right now, the proposed color is to be more like a burgundy red, so a little bit maybe more of a darker than a normal red, barn red. There will be no proposed water or sewer connections, which will not increase any of the public utilities or put any strain on them. All around, the extension of the residential use in this area will have less impact than the surrounding commercial properties with respect to utilities, traffic, and the stormwater generation. So as I was looking up and down the street, I saw these other two commercial buildings, which are allowed in the zone, and the style of the buildings are more or less kind of in the same realm as what we're proposing. The top one has the same, I guess, barn-like features with the hay doors on the top story, the red colors. And then also, both facilities look like, almost like a residential structure, a single-story structure. So will, for the most part, fit in with the surrounding businesses. As part of the review from the town staff, we have also added the requirements for... Nope. Excuse me. Roofline drip edges, so that everything that comes off the roof and the portion of the gravel parking lot will actually get into these roof drip edges and provide some sort of treatment and erosion and sedimentation control. We have, it was also brought up that it was, the property was in the shoreline zone, which is depicted on the plan as this darker line up along the top, and there's no proposed development within the shoreline zone. So we're here tonight to answer any of your questions that you may have, and hopefully a positive recommendation to the zoning board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. We do have an opportunity for public comment on this item. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on this item, please approach the podium, state your name. All right, seeing now I'm going to close public comment, I'm just going to open this one up to the board in general. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, thoughts? Robin.
So I appreciate the applicant's representative talking about that there will be no development in the shoreline zone, but what will you do to ensure that, what the staff has asked is that there's no construction or disruption inside the shoreline zone?
The, well, one way we could do it is have it either flagged, staked and flagged during construction, or we can add another row of silt fence that would more delineate the edge of the shoreline zone to keep the construction away from the shoreline zone. If that would be acceptable.
I was wondering if staff would, does staff feel comfortable commenting? Or is there any further conversation that's needed regarding staying outside the shoreline zone?
I think from our perspective, as long as they stay outside of it and do not disturb anything within it, I think we're generally comfortable.
I think that's a great offer to do the double silt fence. That's keyed in, not just posted in. That would be great. And so you talked a little bit about the architecture. I'm in the general residential character of the area. I don't have any questions on that. But how, other than those drip-line trench features, what other stormwater controls are you planning?
Mostly because it was only, because the majority of the site's already gravel.
Mm-hmm.
So, or not the majority, but this, majority of where this barn or garage is going to be placed is already impervious area, except for a small portion of the gravel parking lot, which will be directed towards the trench. And then all the sedimentation controls will be in place.
Is, is this within the MS4 area? I guess I'm wondering for staff if they know. And if any of the stormwater runoff will be directed to the roadway or the town's right-of-way? I guess that's my question in general, is if any of the stormwater will be directed to the town's right-of-way?
Everything, for the most part, drops off back towards the shoreline zone, in general. So that's probably the direction it will be flowing in.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Rachel.
Yeah, first, one of those picky little details. If you look at Cross Section AA, if you notice, before you take this to the zoning board, you have this actually set up as a mirror image. So you kind of need to reverse that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't notice that.
How big is the original house?
It's approximately 800 square feet.
And you're proposing as a, in addition, an accessory dwelling, something that's 1,800 square feet?
Correct.
Which leads me to the question of, given the space and the setup that you have, what guarantee is there that a tenant, since the purpose is to be more attractive to tenants, doesn't use that for a commercial use, since essentially you've indicated there's both storage and a shop there that lends itself to commercial use along a commercial road?
Sure, that could be something that's written into the lease agreement.
I think, I think that would be appropriate, because otherwise it would be very attractive to somebody who wanted to set up a small business, given the size and the location. Otherwise, if somebody does move in and it's commercial, we have a question of additional impact that we would have to take a look at.
Right.
And that's all my question.
Thank you, Rachel. Is there any other board member? Rachel.
I'm sorry.
Roger.
Sure. Do you have the existing house? Is, there's not going to be anything done to it, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you have any photograph of it?
I did not, I did not take a picture of that, no.
I'm all set. I was just kind of curious about that.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rick.
Can you, obviously it's going to be on, oh, I've got to do my homework. It's going to be built on a slab, correct?
Correct.
And you can confirm there's going to be no floor drains or anything in that slab?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
There was none on the architectural plans, and there's no chance that the floor drain would really work out there.
Jen, did you have some?
Just a clarifying question, the use of this again is just for, just an accessory to go along with the house? It's currently being rented as residential, is that right?
Correct.
Any other comments, questions? All right, so I think our recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals, as long as you incorporate the staff comments, and also the things that you've discussed and agreed to here with the Planning Board, incorporate that with your submission to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think we would pass along a positive endorsement of the plan as it stands, so.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Next item on tonight's agenda is Jay Chapman's request of final subdivision review for 34 New Road, Assessors Map 35 Lot 17. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to change the... So this is located in the RF in Icifer Protection Overlay Districts at 34 New Road. So the board granted preliminary approval for this project back in your last meeting in early September for a six-lot conservation subdivision. And really, the only remaining element that warrants discussion this evening, or that staff believes warrants discussion, is the proposed wooden guardrail along Snowy Isle Lane. The Public Works Department wrote a memo and continues to recommend the applicant install a steel guardrail, due to their concerns about the wooden guardrail being damaged during winter operations. So the board should be sure to discuss this element tonight. And staff is comfortable with the remaining elements being addressed administratively, and has provided you all with a draft motion for your consideration this evening. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Jamel. So this sounds to me like it's a, I will put a guardrail in and made of steel, or I will not.
If only we're black and white like that.
Introduce your project, your name.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions. Here this evening, it would be our pleasure to be able to represent Mr. and Mrs. Chapman, who are here this evening as well, regarding a request for final approval for this particular six-lot subdivision. As Jamel has already mentioned, there's really not a whole lot to it at this point. What I'd like to do, there's a couple of things that I would like to address, but basically, when the memo before you, the bottom of the first page and the second, everything on the second page, all those bullet items, no problem. Okay to every one of those. Many of those are standard conditions anyway. They're either already on the plan or will be, so there's no issues there whatsoever. So coming back then to the, also the requested waiver, we talked about this last time, with the 22 feet of the pavement versus the 24 feet, that's not really an issue. So there really leaves only two things. That is the guardrail and the sidewalk. As far as the guardrail is concerned, we had just a brief impromptu meeting with staff, and essentially, yes, we recognize the need for the guardrail. We're still working with Mike, with the Director of Public Works regarding the type of guardrail. He had actually suggested in a conversation we had last week that there might be a different type of guardrail that we could put there, that would be something less than industrial steel, which is just, from an aesthetic standpoint, it's just, it's horrible-looking, basically, on a subdivision of this, on any place. But it's necessary when you're traveling 60 miles an hour down a highway, 10 miles an hour into a dead-end subdivision, not really the case. But he also, I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but essentially, it was more the concern of, he wants to make sure that the municipal equipment, when they, when the road is actually accepted by the town, that if there's any damage to that guardrail based on, basically plows, pushing snow up against it if it cracks, that was his biggest concern, that he didn't really want to, or that he didn't want the town responsible for having to replace those. So we've got a couple of different options that we are discussing with him. Point being is that as far as the board is concerned, yes, we will have a guardrail there. The type of guardrail, we will work with the Department of Public Works and end up having that in place, acceptable to DPW and the staff long before the town, or before the road is actually turned over to the town for approval, just by way of explanation to the board. The other issue that I'd like to bring up, the only other issue remaining, is the sidewalk. We do have, we did get the waiver for the sidewalk, that was in lieu of an in-lu fee. And the only thing I'd like to bring up there, and Rachel, I'm going to look at you, as far as that fee is concerned, we don't have a problem specifically with a fee and in-lu fee. We don't expect to get something for nothing. But in thinking about what we're doing here, what we'd like to propose, and I'm still going to look at you, is if we put in the pathway, the wood-chipped pathway that we were talking about, which is about almost 2,000 feet of it along the backs of these lots that are on the right, the multiple lots, that would give people a little bit more of a passive recreation area, something to use. It would be a place to gather, particularly in the off-season, but it would also be a ski area. Some people could gather there, as far as people in the neighborhood. And we'd be happy to do that, but what we'd like to do then is from the area, and I'd like to point this out on your plan behind you, sorry, this pointer only works on this particular, on this particular section. So what we do is from about this section right here, all the way down through this section over here, we'd have a pathway, and a wood-chipped pathway, to get people kind of into the woods, be able to have them use it, let them do what they will for a passive recreation, all in this section. And then from this point here, would be the area that we'd like to be able to pay the in-lu fee. The only reason is that $25 per linear foot, based on the linear footage that we have out here, is going to equate to about $32,000 in additional fees as far as the in-lu is concerned. If it were a 40-lot subdivision, or even a 10-lot subdivision, that becomes all relative, it's not a big deal. For a six-lot subdivision, an extra $30,000 becomes a fairly substantial deal. The point being is that if we could, if we could start this guard, or the in-lu fee for the distance from about this point down to here, we cut that down to less than half, which means that instead of about $32,000, we'd be looking at somewhere around $12,000 to $15,000. We, again, understand that we don't want to get something for nothing toward that end, but if we were to put in this trail, so that everything up here, from a safety perspective, from a sidewalk perspective, from people utilizing a different way to be able to access the street or the pathways around it, where people can meet recreationally, et cetera, we'd just like to be able to start that, that calculation from this point on down to New Road. That's essentially it. If the board would acquiesce to that, then I think pretty much we're done. And given that, I'm happy to address any questions or comments that you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. We have an opportunity for public comment this evening. If there's anyone here that wants to speak on this issue, please approach the podium, state your name. Seeing now I'm going to close public comment. So I'll kick this off, why not? I know Rachel's ready. I, so I traditionally don't, and I think over the years, it's probably been noticed that in small subdivisions that don't really go anywhere in particular, I don't have a propensity to acquire the sidewalks when we're not forced to. You know, that said, if I were to look at this project, that corner being maybe a safety issue, maybe I could see a section of sidewalk going in on that corner. So your proposal to only pay a portion up to getting around the dangerous point of the bend, I find relatively acceptable. I think that's fair. That's my personal take. I'll let other board members jump in. I'm glad to hear that you're willing to work with town on the guardrail to get to a point where you're both satisfied, knowing that the town has to operate there and is ultimately going to be responsible if they damage that, so appreciate that. I'll let Rachel go next.
You just threw me a curve. I should point out that it's not really an either-or when we start talking about placemaking in open space. So I do like the idea of the pathway and a place for people to gather. I'm not sure I see it as a trade-off for a sidewalk, since the issue for me about the sidewalk has been the children walking down that area to get to the school bus, if the school bus does not come up the, through the whole development. And for high school kids, it likely will not, certainly for the elementary school kids. So it's an intriguing proposal. But I would have to ask the town, how the town, and that would be Jamel, how the town looks at that sort of a quid pro quo, because there's something about that that I really don't like. Jamel?
Thanks, Rachel. It's definitely a new one for me, at least. I don't know if Angela wants to jump in, but it seems like it's really up to the board whether they feel like the pathway would suffice instead of a sidewalk. The idea of the in-lu fee is to contribute funds that could be used, probably in this part of town, for a sidewalk in the future. I just don't know, really, if staff can offer, can have an answer for you guys for this. It seems like a, are you comfortable or are you not? Sorry to pin it back, but I don't know if Angela...
The only thing I would add is that there's always the option for you to build the sidewalk rather than in-lu fee. So if it seems like you could do it cheaper, I have not found that you can build a sidewalk cheaper than, I think, our fee. I think we've, we're pretty much almost half, just because we look at it as Public Works building a sidewalk, which is, we already have the labor and the equipment sitting there. I mean, materials is a different thing. So I think our rate is a lot lower than having a contractor do it, but also you'd have a contractor mobilize it on-site. So there's the option there to say, is it cheaper, is there other options to do it on-site, to build it yourself?
And I guess I would just offer from, you know, maybe the question sort of historical, you know, what's the board done in the past? I'd say I've seen us take a lot of different approaches, but all sort of starting with the concept of complete streets. Where, when is it viable to bring sidewalks in, and other, and think about other modes of transportation? And then it's really about the characteristics of each project, and looking at the density, the scope. I think as, you know, Mr. Fisher alluded to, is there a difference between a six-lot subdivision and a 40-lot subdivision, and the location of those subdivisions? So I guess I would say, you know, as Jamel had already said, it really is at this point going to be sort of put back to you as the board, and what your comfort level is. I think, you know, from the town's perspective, you know, I think based on the conversation I remember hearing the last time, the board seemed generally comfortable, given the limited number of units out here, thinking about the in-lu fee, but if the board feels that, you know, sidewalk is, makes more sense out here, then certainly we'll act in the direction of the board.
Yes, go ahead, Rachel.
Yeah, I think, to me, the question is, are we willing to do half of the in-lu fee? That's really is the question. In return for their building, the walkway around the development as part of the open space that's contemplated in the ordinance. So that's, that's my struggle. And part of the concern about, as I said before, about the sidewalk is children walking along it. We are aware that there is a potential... We are aware that there is a potential for expanding at some point in the future, and adding to this development. And, I, the decision that we make tonight, then impacts what happens to the rest of the development in terms of sidewalks. If it is indeed expanded for another five or ten, ten houses, there would be no sidewalks. I'm just, as I said, it's something that I'm struggling with. Do we, what do we trade? And, is it, is it actually a trade? Because there are some suggestions that the trail would be appropriate. We certainly have talked about that. And, at the same time, we're looking at, so I accept your offer of a trail, but we are looking at the, the question of the whole of a sidewalk, or half a sidewalk, or half a fee. And, that's the dilemma that we have.
Robin, looks like you were getting ready there.
I am so ready. So, let me ask a clarifying question then. Is the, in, in a lot of neighborhoods, we have to do sidewalks on each side of the road, correct? And, in this one, has there already been a concession that there's only sidewalk on one side of the road?
No, there's no sidewalk. That's already been done. The board's already decided that.
That there will be a sidewalk?
No, that there will not be a sidewalk. That's what the in lieu fee was all about. So, what we're talking about here is, if we were, because one of the conversations we had last time was--
Oh, I remember this.
--it would be nice to be able to have someplace passively recreational in the conservation area, et cetera, which does have a cost to it. And, again, I know that cost doesn't enter into decisions, but it basically does.
Okay. Well, in, in my opinion then, we've already negotiated--
Well--
--that there may be a path, and that it's thirty-two thousand dollars. And, quite frankly, to not get too crass here, I, we're in, ordinarily, this is an environmentally protected watershed. Is this not in the Red, the--
Red Brook.
--Red Brook watershed?
Mm-hmm.
And, we've already said that, you know, it makes sense for the Red Brook to have, you know, a path versus two sidewalks. But, in my opinion, the, the safety trumps the environment every time, and a child's life is far more important than thirty-two thousand dollars. So, I'm unhappy already that you have the in lieu fee. So, I'm, I'm about you having to pay the in lieu fee. And, I apologize developers, but it is the cost of doing development. In Scarborough, this is an area of Scarborough that's going to be on the rise. We're seeing a lot of development in this area, and so, the connection and continuity is going to need to be there, whether it's a path or a sidewalk. And, I feel like we've already negotiated, and so thirty-two thousand dollars is the way it needs to be.
Thank you, Robin. Roger.
So, really, the question is thirty-two thousand versus half of that and a path?
Yes, basically.
That's what it comes down to right now. I think, I tend to agree with Nick. I gotta tell you, I don't see a need for a sidewalk on this development at all to start with, so that's where I'm coming from, from the very beginning. I'm not even sure you need a, a path there either. I think it would be organic by the people who live there, eventually, if they want a path. In an area like this, I don't want to get into the sidewalks again, but I think it's a reasonable compromise that you're, you're offering, so.
Jen.
So, to expand on what Jay mentioned, which is thoughts about the town's complete streets policy, actually, just a question. Do, does, are there plans, even sort of high-level, to further build out this lot?
At the request--
Or, to add additional, additional lots to the subdivision?
There's no plans to do that at this point, with this property owner. Let's be real, though, at some point over the course of the next half a century, that's beautiful developable land back in there, so somebody, eventually, they're going to divest themselves of the property, and somebody will probably come in and do that. But, there's no plans for that in the immediate future.
Okay. So, a six-unit subdivision on, with a, with a dead-end street like this, you know, the volume, the volume of traffic, the speed of traffic, the type of traffic coming in and out of this street, presumably, you know, this will be a single-family home. So, somebody's pickup truck, or a moving van, or, you know, what have you. This is not the type of street that I think needs a sidewalk either. And, the fact that, so, so we've talked about that with the, with the in lieu fee. But, the, you know, even, even building a portion of it, I just took a quick look around this general area on the map, and there's no other sidewalk to tie into, there's nothing, at least on this version of the view that I'm looking at, there's nothing on New Road, there's nothing out on Running Hill Road. And, there's actually even another subdivision nearby, similar number of homes at quick glance, that doesn't have a sidewalk either. So, the, the contribution from this in, an in lieu fee to the town, in my opinion, would probably be better served in a place where these people are more, more people are likely to use it. So, for example, yes, you may have kids coming out of this development, waiting for the bus, to use that as an example, but maybe there's an area, maybe there's a crossing closer to the school that they're going to, that all, that needs improvement, that would sort of, in my opinion, be, you know, perhaps a better use of those funds, not just for the people that live there, but sort of the town in general. And, so, you know, for that reason, I think, you know, I think if the, if the in lieu fee was calculated based on the full length of the sidewalk, then that's probably what, you know, what we should be looking at. I do have a question about the path option, though. Is that something that would be, that would not, that would all be on private property, correct?
No, it would be off the private properties, in the common area, so that anybody who is within that subdivision would be able to utilize it at any point.
Okay, but not within the public right-of-way?
Not, well, people can invite the members of the public, and friends, or what have you, but no, it's not typically open for the average person to come up and park on the road, get out and walk around, and then leave again.
Okay, so that's where, that's, that's the issue that I have, is that if, if the full amount of this fund, these funds were to be used to build a sidewalk, the, the whole length of it, or, you know, down to New Street, sorry, New Road, that that would be something that would be both technically available to the public, but also logically available to the public? Does that make sense? Whereas, a path, it kind of looks like it ducks behind someone's house, might not be as inviting for, for someone unless there was adequate signage, or something like that. So, I guess without, you know, without sort of identifying that, the option that you've provided, which is that of a path, plus the sidewalk, unless that path is going to be identified in a way that's as clear as a sidewalk, that this is space available for everyone to use, I would also vote in, in favor of the full in lieu fee.
We could, toward that end, if I may, we have no problem about putting signage there. It's not like the public can't go there, they just typically don't.
Sure.
But, if, in lieu of not having signage, because they don't know that it's there, that's easy. We'd be happy to put up a little, like a green belt trail sign type of thing.
Something like that, you know, that--
That would identify that, sure, that's not a problem at all.
If, if the intent is to provide, you know, a recreation amenity to residents and, you know, and to the greater benefit of the town, whether that be neighbors across the street, or, you know, friends that are coming to visit, or what, what have you, I think that would be a good way to, to do it, just making sure that it's, it's widely available to everyone.
That was exactly the premise that we came here this evening with, is to say, you know, we'd love signage, just fine, I didn't really think about that, but that's easy, and we can certainly do that.
You know, and it doesn't have, it wouldn't have to be huge, but, you know--
No, but an arrow saying, you know, green belt, well, I wouldn't say green belt, but, you know, woods trail pathway on both ends type of thing, that would be fine. In fact, that's actually probably, that's a good idea, just to be able to let anybody know that, yes, this pathway into the woods is actually yours to be able to utilize. So, that's not an issue. Really, the whole thing comes down to a matter of money. And, I know it's not supposed to, but it does. And, there's a pretty significant difference on a subdivision of this caliber, between basically what equates to around thirty-two thousand dollars and less than half of that. It's not huge, but it's significant. And, that's really the only reason why we're still here, just kind of debating this a little bit. So, we would just toss out there that we'd be happy to construct the path, which will actually take several thousand dollars as well, but that's fine, because ultimately, the developer would end up saving the better part of about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars, which is fairly substantial.
What, what type of maintenance do you foresee on something like that, long-term?
It typically has to be maintained in far, as far as being cleared of any other vegetation that would come up through it over the years. And, if anything falls over it, it would be maintained typically like the green belt is maintained. We'd need to make sure that we go in there as often as possible, but typically, once a year anyway. And, the homeowners association is responsible for that, so they would have to take care of that.
Thank you. Rick Minkin?
As a concession for the no sidewalks, you did agree to put in a street light at that corner. So, to me, that takes care of a little bit about the safety issue. We agreed that this subdivision does not need a sidewalk, and I feel that it, that's Compromise is a nice thing to do. And, a solution such as the one you proposed, seems to help those people that are going to live there, and be an attractive feature for them. And, it's their own little neighborhood, and I think that's a great thing. And, yeah, the compromising so that six lots and six families can live in Scarborough, to me, sounds reasonable. So, I'd be in favor of the path and the half fee for the sidewalk.
Thank you, Rick.
Or, your half.
Can I, is it piggybacking on some--
Yes.
It is, go ahead. Rachel, go ahead. No, she's, she's got to piggyback on this.
Yeah, in terms of what Rick just said, I like the idea of the, the greenway, green belt. Something that we might want to look at adding to that might be a, a pull-off area where somebody who does come from the outside can park a car to walk around. Otherwise, we would see anybody coming in, simply parking on the street in what's already a narrow street.
Rick Perry?
I'm just going to comment on the sidewalks, because everybody else has. So, as far as the sidewalks go, I agree with Nick that a sidewalk around that corner for safety is, makes a lot of sense. And, I think what you indicated, you, we're going to stop the sidewalk is too close to that corner, it's to go, you know, thirty or forty feet around that corner, I would think.
Well, it would typically, the, the in lieu fee that we were talking about, right now is calculated going all the way from New Road, all the way up to the end, would now basically go from New Road here, up to essentially where this first lot line is. So, this is only a calculation, so essentially, from here down to here, would be that linear area upon which, at twenty-five dollars a linear foot, we would end up being, paying the in lieu fee for the sidewalk. What we're asking is that, from this point at this first lot right here, up to the end, because the pathway would then, the woods pathway would then go all the way around this, is that that's the area where we would pick up where there, where the pathway basically takes over from the in lieu fee.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you're, maybe from Nick's initial comments, I thought that your intent was to actually put a sidewalk around to that first lot. But, what your intent, or what you're saying is that you'd want to not put that sidewalk in, and then pay approximately half the in lieu fee, because you're putting in a path?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not for that at all, honestly.
Okay, well, the sidewalk's already gone.
So, the, I understand the in lieu thing, that we've already debated that, and that's fine. I mean, that's already, that's already been decided, I guess. So, but waiving the in lieu fee for a path, I mean, I don't know where that goes. As far as from standards and organization, if we say, okay, they don't have to pay half the in lieu fee because they put in a path, what if the next person doesn't want to put in the in lieu fee because they're going to plant rosebushes up front, or something? I know I'm being overly facetious, but either you put in the sidewalk, or you pay the in lieu fee, in my opinion. And, I would much rather see the sidewalk, but if, if we agreed to an in lieu fee, then my feeling is that I wouldn't start waiving fees for, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Rick.
Can I just add on to that, that this is a dangerous precedence, and I understand the need to compromise, and I feel like we already have. And, when it comes to paying the in lieu fee, you can take that thirty-two thousand dollars and divide it among, among the six lots, and that's only five thousand dollars per lot, to have to recoup on, per family. And, that is, I think, a bargain, when it comes to living in Scarborough and in this area that's developing very rapidly. And, as far as taking the in lieu fee from another place, to, you know, maybe it makes more sense to take it from another place, I disagree. Just because there are no street, there are no sidewalks on the street in this area on New Road, that's the burden that the town's going to have to come up with when this area gets walkable. And, because we are, it is going to be like this, and I'm sort of channeling my inner Susan Ogless, and, and, you know, she's lived, she has lived here for a long, long time, and seen, you know, it, when Black Point wasn't, you know, the big bicycle mecca that it is, and who knows what will happen here in New Road. And, as you mentioned, sometime in the future, this area is going to be developed. And, I think sidewalks are going to be a must, and probably within ten years. And, so, I think we need to stick to our guns on the thirty-two thousand dollars here. And, as Nick mentioned, it is a very, I think it's a very dangerous precedence to set, if we try to renegotiate what we've already given for a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. So, I think everyone's weighed in. I'm not hearing much support for your proposal to split that. For, you know, for what it's worth, I'd like to separate the issues. You know, the first question we had to answer was, do they need a sidewalk or not? And, my mind was immediately, no. And, and that's kind of where, so if I'm not going to require a sidewalk, why do I need to ask for more money? And, that's the, the way I was approaching it. I don't think it was an attempt to circumvent any, or start any precedents, but if, if it's not worthy of a sidewalk, why are we asking for the cash? Again, that is my two cents. I live in a neighborhood with over forty-eight homes in it, not a sidewalk to be seen. We walk those streets with kids, and I'm talking thirty-plus kids at a bus stop every morning. And, for whatever, I mean, it's just not an issue. So, a little bit of that, my feelings on this comes from my experience, living in these types of neighborhoods that don't connect to anywhere. So, even if this did see an expansion, I'm not sure it would have reached the threshold. I understand the need for these ordinances, and what the town is trying to do with the interconnectivity, the complete streets, all of that. But, I still like to think that we have that little bit of rural main nature in us, and that we can, we can manage some, some street walking on our own. So, anyways, that said, you don't have the support, as far as I can tell, from this board to reduce or modify the in lieu fee. We have a motion here prepared, and I am prepared to put it forward. We can go into further discussion after I read all of the findings and the conditions, if we need be. So, bear with me one second while I hold that out. All right. I move to approve the project titled Witten Woods Subdivision, proposed by Jay Chatmish, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Northeast Civil Solutions, dated nine-nine-nineteen, with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. The applicant is proposing a six-lot residential conservation subdivision at thirty-four New Road. The subdivision is located within the RRF and Aquifier Protection Overlay zoning districts, and is further identified on the Town of Scarborough tax maps as map R-35 lot seventeen. Planning Board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation, and finds that the proposed design of the subdivision adequately addresses the requirements of the, of the subdivision and zoning ordinances. Waivers, one, permit the requested road width to be twenty-two feet instead of twenty-four feet. Conditions, one, all future development on tax map R-35 lot seventeen shall be accessed from the proposed future right-of-way depicted on the subdivision plan. Two, prior to the release of the Mylar, the plan set shall be revised to address the following. A, provide a guardrail detail along Snowy Owl Lane, acceptable to the Public Works Department for use on a public street. B, spot elevations related to driveway culverts shall be provided to ensure that each or meeting A, the minimum pipe requirements of a fifteen-inch diameter, B, adequate cover of not less than nineteen inches, and C, the roadway cross slope continues to the driveway culvert location. C, a revised plan note specifying that the contractor will install the town's standard LED Cobra light head fixture. D, the proposed split rail fence on Lot One shall be extended to the property line. E, a revised design of the private way, Marlin Lane, that meets the private way standards. F, updated plan notes S-14 and S-15 with the appropriate information. G, an updated plan note on S-19, as the Town of Scarborough does not-- not plat, provide any maintenance of snow removal or private, for private projects, regardless of their pending status as future public streets. This shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department. A, pay the in-lut fee in the amount equal to the estimated construction of a sidewalk along Snowy Owl Lane. The funds are to be directed to the town's multimodal reserve account. B, execute and record a maintenance agreement as required by the post-construction stormwater management ordinance. C, address the review comments in Woodward and Curran's memo dated nine-nineteen-nineteen. D, revise the homeowners' association documents to include a provision requiring the maintenance of a split rail fence or other hardscape feature demarcating the stormwater feature within Lot One. This shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department. Four, prior revisions of a building permit, the applicant shall A, pay the traffic impact fees, B, pay the recreation contribution fees. Five, prior revisions of any certificates of occupancy, a professional engineer must provide certification that all BMPs proposed at the site were installed and are functioning as intended. This includes the proposed drip edges associated with the single-family dwellings. Six, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the Planning Department. That is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? I have four to one. You both, thanks.
Thank you.
Item number seven tonight, Patriot Realty Saco LLC requests a final site plan review as part of a contract zone proposed for one-on-one Higas Parkway, assessors map R oh-five-two, Lot Five. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this project's actually located in an approved contract zone at the corner of Payne Road and Higas Parkway, adjacent to the exit forty-two interchange ramp. So, the Town Council approved the contract zone in March twenty-nineteen, subsequent to the board granting preliminary site plan approval back in February of this year. So, as a reminder, the applicant is proposing a twenty-one thousand, two-hundred-sixty-five square foot motor vehicle sales repair and service facility, and is seeking final approval this evening. So, as requested by the board in February, the applicant has provided addition, additional landscaping provisions along the Higas and Payne street frontage, and staff has recommended that the applicant provide additional tree plantings within this area, and a detailed analysis of the existing trees proposed to be maintained and pruned. So, the applicant should discuss these recommendations with the board this evening. In accordance with the approved contract zone agreement, the applicant is proposing a Town of Scarborough masonry sign at the corner of the property, and the town has agreed to facilitate the design and construction of this feature. The applicant will be required to provide the funds equal to the construction of the sign to the town. Staff also has some concerns about the proposed lighting on the site. The lighting plan depicts extremely bright lighting levels that should be reconsidered. Staff has also recommended the applicant reconsider eliminating several lights within the rear parking area and reducing the height of the fixtures. And the applicant has also modified the location of the full-access driveway along Higas Parkway as requested by the town's traffic consultant. Given the anticipated impacts to the adjacent intersection, the town's traffic consultant has also suggested several improvements, including modifying the existing phasing of the signals, enhancing the proposed traffic islands, and providing additional signage along the Higas Parkway. The applicant will also need to provide a copy of their main DOT entrance permit and their approval for the proposed Higas Parkway improvements. Staff would also like to note the applicant did provide their main DEP, approved main DEP permit with this submission, and staff has provided the board with a draft motion this evening with conditions for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Jamel. If the applicant would like to introduce the project, we've seen this a few times, maybe you can update us a little bit on what's changed, what's been modified, and then of course, touch on the high spots here on the staff side, especially the main elements that you need planning board input and direction on, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Seymour. I'm a civil engineer and project manager at Sebago Technics here this evening, representing Patriot Accura. Jamel has done a great job introducing the project, but just to touch base on a few of the items that we've acquired since our last meeting in February, probably the largest was the main DEP permit. One of the larger aspects of that was the DEP asked us to go, Robyn, you'll like this, above and beyond the normal. There's been some considerations with Willow Brook, Willowdale Brook out there with some high concentration of chlorides. One of the things they asked us to look at was, one, reducing our winter sanding operations, and, two, which is a different tactic than we've seen recently, is to actually discharge all our treated stormwater directly to the brook, not to the wetlands upstream of those brooks. So, the plans have been modified to show those changes, and in talking with Patriot Accura, they have agreed that they will not use any sand, any salt, sorry, for their winter operations to reduce that impact to the stream. That was one of the larger considerations that we had to work out with the DEP. Other than that, a lot of the things with DEP were technical in nature, and as you can see, we had an approval that you've been forwarded. Going through, I'll just jump right into the staff comments, because I think those reiterate some of the concerns that we've, we've had all along, or the board's had all along. With regards to the trees, this evening I've passed out a quick rendering, which is the one you have here, which incorporates all of the locations that staff had pointed out they wanted additional plantings. We have added more plantings in the back in those islands, and we've added more plantings along the front and along some of the sides coming from, the view from the corner. We've put oaks, maples, a series of native trees in there to help buffer and substantiate the buffer that will be slightly diminished with the work that we're doing in there. I think the toughest item that we're, we've been struggling with all along has to do with the inventory of trees out there. It's just, it's a forest right now, simply put, and there's such a broad range of tree sizes and species out there. We're totally amenable to making that a condition that prior to any cutting or anything, that we'll provide an inventory, or at least an infield marking of all those locations, so that the town can review before we actually start construction. I think that's probably the easiest way to conduct that, because like I said, there's such a broad spectrum of sizes and species out there, that it would take thousands of survey shots to collect all those. And I think that's what was requested, as far as prior to start of construction. Moving on, as far as the buffering goes along Higas and Payne, we do and have shown throughout that we're going to maintain a pretty substantial buffer of natural trees and natural vegetation, a no-cut zone, primarily from the entrance here down to the end of our, it will be untouched. Along through here, there will be an area, especially in the right-of-way. The right-of-way actually goes quite a bit off of the marked pavement edges now. Obviously, those are in the right-of-way. We have no need to cut those. Those will be retained. And then we've also supplemented plantings here and along the Payne Road. One change that we've made is with the utility connection, because it was going to be kind of a cut through here, and talking with the sanitary district, we're coming through the opening here and we'll be tying into the sewer on Higas, so that'll reduce one of the openings along Payne Road. With regards to the sign, we did provide the town an estimate of what we thought that sign would cost, and it was around sixty-three and a half thousand dollars that we'd be contributing to the town. One of the comments that came back would be request to get an actual consultant or contractor price on that. In this climate right now, it's very difficult to get people to bid on something that they may not be building. So, again, we can make that a condition of approval, maybe prior to permits, when we get closer to having our contractor selected, and that bid price out there, we'll have a more accurate market price for that. So, we're amenable to that as a condition prior to building permits. There were, and we have been, in a lot of discussions with MDOT. With me this evening is Derek Caldwell, a traffic engineer with our company, who can get into more detail if you want. Unfortunately, we've been working with DOT, and they are so backlog that they still have not written us any kind of approval. We do have an approval for the entrance, the relocated entrance and controlled opening access, because that was a change from the original Higas opening, so we do have approval for that. What we don't have acknowledged for yet is the lane improvements. And we've been in many conversations with Bill Bray from Traffic Solutions, the town's consultant. We've had some preliminary conversations with MDOT. It all seems like it's on track, it's just a matter of getting this to the table with the DOT, just waiting for it to come to the top of the pile, and we've been a few months waiting for that to happen. So, our feeling is, we have a strong feeling that that's gonna be accepted, we just don't have it in writing at this time. And as far as Bill's comments with changes in line striping and lane striping and traffic controls, we're totally agreeable and amenable to all those conditions as well. With the split phase and traffic signs along both Payne and Higas, we are agreement that we would do that. I think, just going through here quickly, we did ask for, request a waiver from twenty-five feet to twenty-four feet. I believe we've discussed this in the past, and, and staff is supportive of that. Snow storage areas, we have shown on the updated plan. In the back, we have multiple areas for snow storage. As far as multimodal reserve accounts, we are in agreement that we would pay that in lieu of building the sidewalk, which conversation you've had this evening. And like I've mentioned, we've added trees, we've landscaped the islands. In regards to lighting, we've also agreed that we would have a nighttime phase where those lights would be dimmed. I do think that our consultant, who we've worked with, is not directly through Sebago, is through the owner. We've been in discussions with them, trying to get updated photometrics. Unfortunately, I was not able to get those in time since the comments came out Thursday, but we're in agreement that we would reduce those poles to twenty feet, and we'll look at ways to reduce the intensity light levels. I think the only area of intensity light levels that we'd like to retain would be those security areas, which would be the front of the building and those along the doors for access to the building. The area in the back, obviously, can be dimmed, and probably even some of those in the front, the display areas, but I think overall, we're gonna want the building very secure, and anything that's near the building, secure, because that's where the, my guess is, the higher-end vehicles would be likely kept. We have met with the sanitary district and reviewed that. We have provided a letter stating that they're approval for the capacity, and we have discussed with both the police department with regards to the correct nine-one-one address, that will be one-on-one Higas Parkway, for the official address for the site, and the fire department has reviewed, and we have amended hydrant locations per his request. I know I may be missing some things, and obviously, I'll answer any questions that you have, but the idea is that this evening, we'd like to obtain final with these conditions, so that we may be able to put this out to bid and get into construction early next spring.
Thank you very much for your presentation. This is an opportunity for public comment as well. If you are interested in speaking on this item, please approach the podium and state your name. Seeing that, I'm gonna close public comment. Roger, do you want to start this one?
Glad to see this before us again. I was getting worried. I, I tend to agree with you on the, on the inventory of the trees. I mean, it's, it's a lot of trees out there. So, whatever you can work out with staff on that, I would, I would go along with. The, what kind of trees are you gonna put in the parking lots in those little islands?
Just a second here. Those are going to be a combination of tupelo and, we'll leave some other deciduous trees that would not have, obviously, seeds or any kind of fruit or anything like that. That was a concern that both the applicant and we had, is that we didn't want those getting on cars, basically. So, we've looked at the species to try to match it up with what works best with inventory out there.
Okay. I, I remember that was one of the arguments against the trees before, so. This area, when you're going along the parkway, where you have the, the stormwater?
Yes.
Areas, is that, that area in between there, is that gonna be lawn or just gonna be natural turf?
That will be a natural area that'll be allowed to come back to its natural state. It may be occasionally manicured, however, in the DEP order, you know, we did not mention that as a lawn area, so that will be allowed to come back to its kind of natural condition between the two ponds. And frankly, most of those ponds will grow in over time as well.
Okay. In the, in staff's comments, I think, there was a discussion about the trees, cutting the trees up to fifteen feet?
Yes.
Whatever trees. Are they, are you, is staff referring to the regular, the existing trees that are there, or the new trees there? There would be the new trees that you planted there?
I believe they were discussing the, or talking about the existing trees they were gonna leave along the frontage, so they would prune them, so you could still see through to the development.
Yeah, okay.
But still provide some layering.
Okay.
And those, just to clarify, those would be more along the frontage and more along the Payne Road side. Those, where the ponds are, there's no interest in obviously seeing through to look at a pond. So, it's really to kind of keep that front entrance and more towards the Payne Road side, those would be thinned.
Okay, and I just want to get a clarification from staff. I have to find it here, but you, there was a discussion about the trees in a access road, and I think you were referring to off of Payne Road, when you were talking about trees defining the entrance, sort of the right-of-way or something like that?
Yeah, I think, I can try and find the comment, but I think the general idea was to provide some street trees along the drive aisles within the, in the development, so the entrance ways and sort of along the edges where cars would be driving.
And in the rendering you have this evening, we've shown that we're gonna be placing some trees along the edges of the aisles and within the aisles itself.
Okay. Is staff satisfied with that? You know, does that satisfy that?
Are you satisfied? Yeah, it appears to cover our, our concerns.
I don't have anything else right now. I'm just pleased it's here, and things seem to be moving along.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Jen?
Um, I have a question about your, the rate, the truck turning diagram that you provided. So, you're not proposing any pavement modifications at the actual intersection, correct?
There will be now, and Derek may be able to speak more to this in conversations with Bill Bray, the traffic consultant. They're talking about some realignment, and there's a multitude of things coming along in this intersection. We're kind of the small fish first here.
Yeah.
Obviously, there's some bigger players that'll be coming down the line with some other improvements, but in that, in those conversations, we've looked at ways to realign some of the lanes. There would be no, I don't believe there'd be any actual pavement work. Do you like to come up? There would be no immediate pavement work at that intersection, extending.
Right, so the current proposal is, I think we're referring to is the, the northeast corner, where we had the truck turning?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so that was showing that, we were looking at if that, there's an existing wide shoulder there with the striping in it, if that could be utilized as a dedicated right turn lane. But what we found was that, without expanding the pavement, a truck couldn't safely maneuver that corner. And right on that corner, you have the traffic control cabinet and the mast arm, so it just wouldn't be feasible to simply widen.
Okay, so the, so the point of the graphic is just to show that a dedicated right turn lane would sort of not work or kind of cut it too close, even if the pavement were to be widened, so instead, that'll be a shared right, that'll continue to be a shared right lane, is that right?
Well, the, the Higas approach would not be modified, essentially. That'd still remain just a striped shoulder.
Okay. So, but that can still, you can still make a truck turn there, correct? Without modifying the intersection?
Right, so we, I guess, overall, there would be no modifications to the actual alignment of the roads at the intersection. The only changes would be the signal timing, as well as the northbound Payne Road. We'd be... What our analysis showed, which in Bill Bray's comment was mentioned, was the, on that approach, the lane configuration would be changed, but none of the lane widths or anything would actually be modified, just the usage of the individual lanes.
Okay. So, I guess my, my only question is just to make sure, because I'm sure that you'll be having large trucks coming in here. Probably, they're coming in off the highway, I'm not really sure, but maybe a delivery up Route One from somewhere in Saco, I don't know. But just making sure that that large truck can make the right turn under the current geometry of the intersection. geometry of the intersection without impacting the signal equipment or the other island that's out there. That would be my question.
I think one of the confusing things is, right now, it appears to be a right lane. It's actually a paved shoulder, so it's not a formal lane. So you've got
But from the formal lane?
Right. From the formal lane, you have plenty of room to make the right turn.
Okay. Even with a large
Even with a large truck, yes.
Okay. Sorry. I now understand what your graphic was intended to provide. That was my biggest hangup, sorry, I was stuck on that. Other than that, I appreciate Bill's detailed comment letter on this. And I think that's the biggest question that I had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Rick Munkin.
Without seeing cut sheets of the fixtures, I don't know all the photos optics of those. But I have to agree with staff that there's a lot of overlighting going on here. And I understand you want to show, show the vehicles off, but carrying an average of 50 or some lumens is pretty high in that front area. And it's going to be, and it bleeds over quite a bit. And I think we can probably come up with some fixtures that won't have so much bleed over. And you actually have more light in front than you do in the back, and that's where the vandalism is likely going to happen anyway.
Yeah.
And I think you're well lit up there.
Yeah.
So I would really suggest that you redo the calculations for the photometrics and provide staff with cut sheets so they can determine night sky and all of that issue.
They will be, just in remission, the R4 cutoff, their LED. And it's a corporate, unfortunately, it was a corporate standard, and as you pointed out, they like to light things up pretty intensely. So giving them the Scarborough standard, we've requested that they greatly reduce that impact, especially along the front. I understand, again, that along the building, we'll want some light, but I don't think we need 50-foot candles. That's typical of what we see on the sports fields. So we'll have them back that off and we'll provide the town with an updated photometric.
Perfect. That's all I have.
Thank you, Rick. Rick Perry.
All right. Well, now, Rick talked about lighting, and I've got nothing to talk about. You know, as far as the lighting goes, I know you said you didn't determine which ones are going to be security lighting and which ones are going to be full-on as well.
Yes. I think the majority of the site will be on, will be dimmered at night.
Yeah.
I think only the front will be the security area and any areas around doors.
Right. And I have to look at the plan set for that entire area to see what's, you know, what's in that area that's going to be affected by that light, whether it's residential or whatever. But, yeah, as long as all the lights are dimmable, so they all have to have the right, you know, the right seven-pin receptacle so that they can accept the dimming control.
Right.
So I don't want you to get down the road and say, well, we found out we can't dim them. So I'm sure you're going to submit cut sheets to the town and, you know, they all need to be capable of dimming. So they all need to be able, capable of accepting that control. And then, I'm sure
Unfortunately, the one residence is the one that's there now. There's really nothing in vicinity of that.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure which ones should be security and which ones could be dimmed, but I'm sure you'll do a good job in dimming as many of them as you can.
Yeah.
And I would just say, make sure they're all capable of it. And then, again, I didn't review the photometric plan, but I think they're probably all 3,000 Kelvin.
Yes.
But, yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you, Rick. Rachel.
Yeah, I think the plantings that you have passed out tonight go a long way towards the concerns that were expressed. I do think it's possible, if you are going to be cutting up to 15 feet, some of the limbs, it would be good if underneath there you planted ferns, shade plants, low-lying, but something that actually provides something more aesthetically pleasing than a bunch of leaves that could end up there. Now, I have a question. I cannot find the snow storage areas. I'm sure they're here someplace. I can't find them.
We have located those on the most recent sheet. And those are primarily along the sides. All these areas along the sides would be allowed to have snow storage off the edges.
I don't see it listed.
Well, we'll make sure that we have it listed.
Yeah, it does need to be, it does need to show clearly on here. Anyplace else?
We originally had talked about at the end, but where we have the stormwater treatment pond, we can't store it there. In lieu of that, there may be times of the year, depending on inventory, where that back lot may become an actual snow storage itself, or portions of it.
Okay.
Within the paved area.
All right.
Just because inventory can drop in the winter. But if it does get too large in the spring, we'll be contracted to remove it.
All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Rachel. Robin.
You had mentioned that there was a no-cut zone, Jim, in, near where the wetland conservation area is.
Yes, we have a, and I believe I have another picture of that.
My, my question really is around whether or not there'll be, this will be memorialized in covenants or deed restrictions on the property, just as a reminder that the trees are our best line of defense against flood control in this area?
Well, it's obviously part of the approval process, but I don't know if we'd have any objection to put in any kind of deed restriction.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Robin. I'd like to just add that I think you've done a nice job, especially with the improvements to the landscaping side of this. We're, I think we're very excited to see this come to fruition. It's been quite the process, we know, multi-phases, multiple years, I assume.
Yeah, contract zone through the whole process.
So, you know, we appreciate you working with the town, going through our process. It's never easy, can be trying. You've done a very good job of taking comments from staff and this board, the council, and incorporating them into your proposal. So for that, I'm grateful. We do have a motion prepared this evening. I will read it, and if we need to discuss any of the items further, we will do so. So I move to approve the project titled Accurate Dealership Proposed by Patriot Realty Saco LLC as depicted on the plan set prepared by Sebago Technics dated 9/19 with the following findings, waivers and conditions. Findings: The applicant is proposing a 21,265-square-foot motor vehicle automobile sales, repair and service facility with associated landscaping, parking, stormwater management, infrastructure and other site plan elements. The property is identified on the Town of Scarborough tax maps as R-52 Lot 5 and is subject to the provisions set forth in the approved contract zone agreement. Planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation and finds that the proposed design and site plan adequately addresses the site plan review and zoning ordinance requirements for site utilization, layout, access, internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, architecture, signage, utilities and storage. Waivers: One, permit the requested parking aisle width of 24 feet instead of 25 feet. Conditions: One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the plan set shall be revised to include A, additional landscaping and tree plantings along the Higas Parkway and Payne Road street frontage as noted in the staff review comments memo dated 9/23/19; B, revise the photometrics plan as noted in the staff review comments memo dated 9/23/19; C, additional areas for snow storage; D, additional deciduous tree plantings along the northerly, easterly, southerly edges of the rear parking lot; E, tree plantings and other landscaping within each of the proposed landscape islands; F, additional buffering provisions along the property's northerly border along the parking area and adjacent to the dumpster enclosure area. Two, prioritizations of the building permit, the applicant shall A, pay the traffic impact fees; B, pay the in-lu fee equal to the total cost of installing the proposed Town of Scarborough masonry sign; C, pay the in-lu fee in the amount equal to the estimated construction of a sidewalk along the Higas Parkway and Payne Road street frontages. The funds are to be directed to the town multimodal reserve account; D, address traffic review comments in Traffic Solutions memo dated 9/16/19; E, address the review comments in Woodward and Curran's memo dated 9/19/19; F, provide approval by the Scarborough sanitary district; G, provide approval by the main DOT; H, coordinate with the fire department in regards to fire suppression for the project; I, revise Plan Note Number Three in the overall site plan to include the date the contract zone was approved by the town council. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Three, prioritizations of a sign permit, the applicant shall provide a final signage plan that shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Four, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall provide a detailed analysis of existing trees along Higas Parkway and Payne Road street frontages that includes the existing trees, location, size and species to be maintained and pruned. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Five, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer and their site contractor and is to be coordinated through the planning department. That is the motion.
Second.
I have a second discussion. And I just want to clarify one point on here. I believe staff and this board and perhaps the applicant on number four, where it says detailed analysis. I think what you're proposing was, was fine with staff, not necessarily a full-blown plan, but essentially
I think what we envisioned would be a plan, and then we'd also have markings in the field that could be reviewed with different colors based on what we're doing to those particular species. So I think it's a combination of a plan and a site visit prior to construction.
If that's okay with staff, great. So I think we're there. Robin.
Mr. Chair, just my request to, prior to perhaps the certificate of occupancy, that there will be deed restriction or covenants provided regarding the conservation of the trees in perpetuity.
I have that.
Thank you.
Are you making a motion to amend, or is this up for discussion before you make that motion?
I'm prepared to make the motion, but I encourage you all to discuss if needed.
Thank you. Anyone want to weigh in on having some sort of deed restriction on the conservation area land only? And this is what, to prohibit any cutting with a typical exemption for dangerous dying trees?
Exactly.
That being, I'm, I'm okay with the suggestion. Anyone else? Yes, Roger.
Does the applicant have any comment regarding that?
I don't believe we do. I think we would use the standard, you know, vegetated buffer or wooded buffer language from the DEP, which allows exactly that.
Exactly. That's what I was thinking, Jim, was the standard DEP language. Thank you.
I'm fine.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend deed restriction.
Second.
Six, so the number six will be added to the current motion. Prior to the certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide a deed restriction to require the no-cut tree areas remain undisturbed. That's the motion. We have a second, Rachel, I think. And all in favor of amending the main motion? Is unanimous? Okay. So now to any further discussion on the amended motion? No? Okay. All in favor? I'm sure that's unanimous. Congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, with regard to the next item coming up, I have been advised by town council to, I'm sorry, council, meaning
For the town.
S-E-L, that I should recuse myself, as I am a member of the Friends of Scarborough Marsh.
We appreciate that. And in first alternate is Rick Duperry. We're going to take a five-minute recess real quick before we jump into this. We're going on it for about an hour and a half. All right. We'll return about 6, 7.
How much did you pay him?
[laughing].
All right, thank you all again for rejoining us. Our next item on tonight's agenda is Bell Atlantic Mobile of Allentown DBA Verizon Wireless requests a review of transmission tower at 415 Black Point Road, Cessers Map, R 103, Lot 17A. Jamel?
This is actually Jay.
Jay.
All right. Good evening. So I know it's been a little while since, let's see if I can just get a little less echoey here, since we've seen this before the board. I think it was last in March of this year. So just by way of little background, this is for Verizon Towers' proposed transmission tower on the sanitary district site down on Black Point Road. This is in the RF district as well as the overlay district, which allows for transmission towers. This has been before the board for a number of times, and as you may recall, there's really sort of a three-step process in going through transmission tower review. There's the first piece is the priority of location, which this board, I believe it was back in September, actually, of 2018, that the board found that the applicant had met the priority of location component or step of the process. The next two steps are really going through the performance standards of the transmission tower performance standards and the performance standards of the zoning ordinance, as well as the site plan review standards. And so harking back to our last meeting, really, there seemed to be just a few remaining outstanding items, really with regards to the visual impact analysis, which deals with buffering, height, tower style, and tower color. And I think the board at that time discussed an alternative location, location B, I think, as we've been calling it, which the applicant is back before you discussing, proposing. Board felt that that did a better job of buffering. As I said, the other elements to talk about had to do with the tower style. There had been some discussion about using a traditional tower or mono pine. Ultimately, this board felt that a stealth tower would be more in keeping with the standards. And so the applicant is back before you with that as well. I think what I'll do is, I've had a conversation with the applicant earlier in the day, and I know they, I think, are going to have some discussion with board with regards to height and color, and so at this point, I might turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, and let the applicant take it from there.
Thank you, Jay, I appreciate it.
Actually, I failed to mention, Jamel maybe put it on my comments from before, we have received dozens of letters, emails, and handwritten letters from the public. All those have been made available to the planning board electronically, so emails we sent right along, letters that have been sent in have been scanned and sent to the board, and we have those in the public record. And we have, as the chair had requested staff to do at the prior meeting in March, we have prepared a draft motion that has been distributed amongst some folks, so that is what I have at this time.
Thank you, Jay, I appreciate it. Scott, would you like to introduce the project, your name?
Sure.
And kind of get us the highlights and hopefully some good news.
Will do. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Jay, for the process roundup. Scott Anderson, I'm here tonight with Chip Fredette. Chip and I do local permitting for Verizon Wireless for tower sites. As Jay has noted, we started initially, I think, as pretty much most of the board members know, we started originally with a proposal for a 100-foot monopole or monopine. That would have been a centralized pole with racks of antennas located on the outside. We had a pretty extensive discussion at the last March meeting, and some of the interested parties had brought together photo simulations. We had done simulations both for our proposed 100-foot tower, both in the location that we had initially identified with the sanitary district, and then in this so-called location B that Jay had referenced, which was a little deeper into the existing vegetation. So we did simulations of both locations. We also did simulations of 120-foot stealth tower, so-called brown stick, which is different from the original pole design because the antennas are mounted internally inside the pole, so you don't see them on the outside. That had some consequences for height because you had to go up a little bit higher because you had fewer antennas. At that time, back in March, we had talked about these two alternatives, the 100-foot pole we had recommended with the antennas on the outside, and this 120-foot stick with the antennas on the inside. And then we also were talking about the two different locations. So at the end of the planning board's meeting in March, I think the consensus of the board and the consensus of most of the folks that had been participating in the process was that the design with the internally-mounted antennas was preferable, and also that this location B, a little farther into the vegetation, was preferable as well. And the way the board left it was asking Verizon to go back to the sanitary district to see if we could obtain approval from the landowner to make those changes. And again, at that time, we were contemplating 120. That was the size of the brown stick that we had been talking about and working with our RF engineer. So good news, I think, round number one, we were able to go back to the sanitary district and obtain approval from them to do the stick. And actually, we had some flexibility on design, but we really needed their approval to change the location to the location B. We are grateful for the sanitary district's support, and they approved an amendment to the lease to allow us to put the tower location in the location B. And we had submitted with the September 9 submission that I had sent in a copy of that lease amendment showing that we've got that right to move the tower where the board and most of the commenters and members of the public and organizations wanted us to move the tower. So that went well. At that point in time, we were still working on plans for the 120-foot brown stick that we had discussed with the board. In between kind of the meetings with the sanitary district and when we submitted the revised plans to you, some of the groups, including PNA and others, reached out with a couple of other suggested recommendations and requests for the design of the site. One of them in particular was to reduce the tower by an additional 10 feet from 120 to 110. And then we had a more kind of detailed proposal on coloring. We had talked a little bit before at the last meeting that the standard color that we normally do is the galvanized gray, which is the color of our neighboring tower right here that I saw for the very first time when I pulled into the parking lot. A lot of times, that is the best color because it blends into varying cloud conditions and the like. There was a discussion about doing kind of a brown at the bottom of the pole and more of a blue-gray at the top to try to capture, you know, what will be around those different sections of the tower. And what we had indicated in March is that we still think that gray works out better, but we're kind of agnostic on color. So provided that we can find a paint color that roughly matches what the board and what some of the commenters have recommended, and we can make sure that our contractors that build these sites are able to find, you know, it's not necessarily the Sherman Williams that goes in your bathroom trim. It's got to be a little hardier, but we've got some flexibility on color. So both the issue of the 110 and the coloring, we went back to Verizon, and I'm pleased to report that Verizon is comfortable changing the height down to 110. It's not as great, but it's 10 feet, so it has some additional benefit and will still largely meet the coverage objectives of the site. Will have the effect of improving coverage in the area, as has been our goal all along. So I think where that puts us is that we're still kind of willing to do all these different designs, but it has been clear that many of the groups that have been spending their time commenting on the project and indication with the board is that the location B is preferable. We're able to do 110 feet, which we think is the preference of the folks that have been participating in the proceeding. We still think that the gray is the best color, but we are willing to do a different painting scheme if ultimately the board decides that that is the way to go. On that one item, again, I can't say that we can kind of meet a particular manufacturer with a certain color number right here, but what we would respectfully request is that we match the color to that, and if we just get some direction from the board as to it's going to be this brown color here and this blue, sky blue color here, then what we'll do is when the project goes to the contractor, we'll require them to match that with the kind of paint that they would need to put on an exterior structure like this, and make sure that staff is comfortable that we've matched the color to the greatest extent possible. And also get some indication from the board as to where the break line is, as to when it goes from one color to the other and what those colors would be. With regard to co-location and setbacks, those are two other issues that you have before you. We are closer to the property boundaries because we have moved it kind of deeper into the woods, but as Jay has noted and Jamal has noted in the past, the board has some flexibility on that. When you find that that location is slightly closer to the property lines, it better offers more buffering, which I think is the situation here. And obviously, we're still more than the tower height distance. Right now, we'll be talking about 110-foot pole with 150-foot setback, so we almost meet the 150% requirement. For co-location, the plans show that there are three bays beneath us, and so theoretically, we don't really know what the coverage requirements are of other carriers until they come to you, but theoretically, the pole can house three additional array bands inside the pole. And just one clarification that I received today from Chip, we have leased this entire area, so another carrier coming on to the site, we have enough room at the bottom for three additional carriers within the leased area. We only need 3535. We shrunk the size of the fenced area, but we've leased an area that's sufficient for us and three additional carriers, and anyone that would come to co-locate doesn't need to negotiate a separate deal with the sanitary district. We have leased up that space and can allow co-locators to go on. They wouldn't need an additional lease from the sanitary district. They would be able to come on to the pole as of right. So I think those are the details. I hope that's two rounds of good news, and we're here to listen to any further comment from the public and respond to any questions from the board, and we're hopeful that we've been able to kind of work with everyone in the process to come up with a design that kind of runs the middle here. May not be what everybody wanted, but is a solid compromise on a bunch of things, and we're still very, very confident that this is an area that needs some coverage assistance, and this is a good site, and we're in the overlay zone, and we're hoping that this is a project that the board can support. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. We have an opportunity for public comment on this item, so if you were here to speak on this issue, we're going to ask that you state your name for the record. We're going to allow four minutes per speaker, and we're going to ask that you keep your comments, just hopefully something that we have not considered. At the three-minute and 32nd mark, I give a little courtesy tap, which means get to your conclusion, and then when I tap it again, that means you're done. All right?
I think I've heard that, Tab.
You have heard this before.
Members of the board, my name is Natalie Burns. I'm from Jensen Barrett Gardner in Henry, and I'm here tonight representing the Prouds Neck Association. I want to start out by saying I'm a little disappointed. I had prepared some remarks for tonight, and I had a lot of drama in them. I will not be making any of those dramatic remarks tonight. We would like to acknowledge that Verizon has relocated the tower as this board requested and as PNA and many of the neighbors had requested. We appreciate particularly the drop in height to 110 feet. We would like to ask the board to press for a color, and I believe that you have our communication from Terry Dewan, who suggested a specific color, which was Benjamin Moore 1597 Pebble Beach, which I think is a nice way of saying that it's a certain kind of a flat gray. We do acknowledge that Verizon may not be able to use Benjamin Moore in an industrial setting, so we'd ask that it be a similar color and that staff be allowed to make the final review of what Verizon can come up with that works for them to ensure that it's a similar type of color to this. And if not, we'd ask that it come back to the board, but I'm sure they can find something that's very close to that. And I believe that's the overall tower color. I don't think it's two different colors anymore. So hopefully, that's an improvement. So rather than going on and taking more time, I'm just going to say that we'd like to thank the board for having listened to us, for asking for the changes that you asked for, and we'd also, never thought I'd be saying this, would like to thank Verizon for the changes that it has made. We really appreciate that they listened to us and that they did this. This is an area where a tower is allowed. It might not be our first choice for where a tower would be allowed, but it is allowed, and Verizon had every right to pursue an application on this site. But thank you to Verizon and to the board for making this a better proposal than it was when we first saw it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anne Fandell. I'm a member of the board of Friends of Scarborough Marsh, and I'm here tonight to deliver a message from Stephanie Smith, who is the president of the board, who unfortunately could not attend tonight. I might not even need to say this now, but she stated, "For the board, since you have received a letter cosigned by me and the Prouds Neck Association, I will make my remarks brief. As outlined in the letter, we believe that a saddle tower to the height of 110 feet is adequate for its use. The engineer hired by the Prouds Neck Association has done due diligence in reviewing this request and specified a tower height of 110 feet. I ask that the planning board consider this height as the upper limit of what they will approve." Thank you, Stephanie Smith, president of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers this evening? This is a surprise. Okay. With that said, I'm going to close public comments. So I'm going to kick this off, and I'm going to tell you thank you, especially to the people in this audience. You fought tooth and nail, and you got this to where it needed to be, and I appreciate all of you being here and voicing your concerns and helping move this project forward. And as Natalie had said, maybe it's not ideal that it's going to be there, but we've done the best with what we had to work with, so we appreciate it very much so, and Verizon as well. You know, it's not easy coming back through this process for over a year and revising your plans six to eight times, or how many ever, and I know that a lot of work on it is. So, look, civics works. This is great, so kudos to everyone involved. I'm satisfied with what I have presented in front of me. I don't have a whole lot left to comment on at that point. The only thing I want to just confirm, my understanding too, is that the color of the tower would be just one color.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone here had a different impression of that? No? Okay. Any other comments from this planning board or questions? This is just shocking all around. We're all a little stunned. Let's take a minute, take a deep breath. That said, we do have a motion prepared. I believe it had been shared with the public as we requested last time out, so it is lengthy, so if you've got a blanket and a pillow, cozy up. Okay. "I move to approve the site plan amendment project titled Scarborough 2 ME, proposed by Verizon Wireless and depicted on the plan set prepared by Nexus dated 4/1919 with the following findings and conditions. Findings concerning compliance with Scarborough zoning and site plan review ordinances. The applicant is proposing to construct a 120-foot brown concealment, 120-foot brown concealment brown stick transmission tower located in the leased portion of land at 415 Black Point Road owned by the Scarborough Sanitary District. The tower and associated infrastructure will be located within the 5,625-square-foot lease area." The proposal also include an approximately 470-foot long, 15-foot wide gravel access road with, within a hundred, I, I'm sorry, within a 20-foot wide access and utility easement. Property is located within the transmission tower overlay district and the rural farming zone, zoning district, and is identified on the town of Scarborough tax maps as map R103 Lot 17A. Planning board has reviewed the above referenced application and supporting documentation and finds that the proposed design of the project, project adequately addresses the transmission tower performance standards contained in the Scarborough zoning ordinance and performance and design standards contained in the Scarborough site plan review ordinance. Zoning Ordinance Section 9F, Performance Standards Transmission Towers. 1. Priority of Locations. A. Existing Transmission Towers. The applicant has provided information about the possibility of co-locating on the Black Point Inn, Black Point Fire Station, and Church Steeple at 167 Black Point Road as alternatives to the proposed tower. Based on the evidence provided, the planning board has determined that co-locating a tower at one of these alternative locations would leave gaps in service. B. New Transmission Towers Within the Industrial or Light Industrial Districts. The applicant is not proposing a new transmission tower within the industrial or light industrial zoning districts. C. New Telecommunication Facilities. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that the applicant is not proposing a new telecommunication facility. D. New Transmission Towers Within the Transmission Tower Overlay District. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that the applicant has submitted substantial evidence and justification and has demonstrated that a location of higher priority under subsections 1A through C above cannot reasonably accommodate the applicant's requirements for coverage improvements in the intended geographical area. 2. Standards for Transmission Towers. A. Height. Number 1. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that a 110-foot transmission tower effectively screens and mitigates the visual impacts of the tower from surrounding properties, abutters, roadways, and public spaces while still providing the applicant's coverage requirements. Planning board has ensured that this tower height still accommodates the co-location requirements of subsection 2G below. 2. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that this standard is not applicable. B. Minimum Lot Size and Setbacks. 1. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that the standard is not applicable. 2. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that the proposed location, which results in a decrease from the standard 150% of the tower, total tower height setback to not less than 150 feet from the closest abutting property, will result in better screening and buffering and from surrounding properties, abutters, roadway, and public spaces. C. Buffering. 1. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that this standard is not applicable. 2. Based on the visual analysis, photo simulations provided by the applicant, the planning board has determined that the proposed location for the tower is adequately surrounded by a buffer of dense tree growth and vegetation that screens the facility and minimizes its visual impacts from abutting properties, roadways, and public spaces. D. Visual Impact Analysis. The applicant performed a balloon test in December 2018 and provided a visual analysis that included photo, photo simulations of the tower as seen from 11 different locations in town. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that proposed location, buffering, and style of the tower minimizes the visual impacts to the greatest practical extent. The visual impact analysis has informed the decision related to height and color as stated in subsections A and E of these findings. E. Tower Style. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that a 110-foot stealth tower with concealed antennas minimizes the visual impacts to the greatest practical extent. The planning board has also determined that the tower shall be painted a color similar to Pebble Beach, which is a Benjamin Moore 1597. This condition is red condition. The plans shall be revised to include a tower color equivalent to Benjamin Moore 1597 Pebble Beach. F. Lighting. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that there is no lighting proposed on the tower or attached to antennas. G. Co-location. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that co-location opportunities on the stealth tower design are reduced given to all the antennas must be mounted inside the tower and require more vertical space than a monopole tower design. As such, the 110-foot stealth tower has sufficiently space, has sufficient space to co-locate at least three additional carriers. Planning board has determined that this design will result in lower tower height and minimizes visual impacts. H. Advertising. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that there is no advertising or signage on the tower or attached antennas. I. Coverage. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that the applicant has demonstrated that there is inadequate coverage for the area covered by the application. J. Structural Standards. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that the applicant has demonstrated that the tower meets all applicable requirements of federal and state regulations and has been designed in accordance with the standards of Electric, Electronic Industries Association Structural Standards for Steel Antenna Towers and Antenna Supporting Structures. Condition. This item will be further reviewed to ensure compliance as part of the building permit process. K. Existing Towers. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that this standard is not applicable. Abandonment. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that the applicant has provided substantial evidence and justification that they will remove the facility and associated infrastructure and return the site to its pre-construction condition, including removing of roads and replanting vegetation at their own expense. Condition. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, a finalized surety shall be provided to the planning department to guarantee the removal of the tower should it become abandoned. This documentation must comply with provisions of Section 9F 2.1 of the zoning ordinance. M. Shoreland Zoning. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that the tower is not located within any shoreline zoning district. N. Public Notification. Based on the public record, the planning board has determined that the planning department provided appropriate notification to all property owners abutting the tower site. Site Plan Review Ordinance, Section 4, Performance and Design Standards. A. Site Utilization and Layout. The design of the tower, associated infrastructure, has been laid out to minimize the, the impacts on environment, environmentally sensitive areas and oriented in a manner to reduce the visual impacts from abutting properties, roadways, and public spaces. B. Site Access. Given that approximately one visit per month by the applicant's technician will occur on the site, the existing paved driveway and the designed, design of proposed 15-foot wide gravel access road provides for adequate access to the site. C. Internal Vehicular Circulation. Given that approximately one visit per month by the applicant's technician will occur on the site, the existing paved driveway and proposed 15-foot wide gravel access road provides for safe and convenient movement within the site. D. Parking Areas. Given the approximately one visit per month by the applicant's technician will occur on the site, the proposed parking area provides for adequate parking on the site. E. Pedestrian Ways, Space, and Alternative Transportation. This standard is not applicable, given no pedestrian access will be permitted on the site. F. Landscape Buffering and Green Space. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that the tower will be adequately buffered and screened, and the buffering requirement in Section 92B of the zoning ordinance have been met. G. Stormwater Management. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that the proposed tower and associated infrastructure will have a negligible impact on any stormwater runoff. H. Lighting. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that proposed switch activated light attached to the canopy covering the radio equipment has been designed to balance visibility and safety on the site while minimizing impacts on abutting properties and light pollution. I. Architecture and Signage. Based on the documentation provided, the planning board has determined that this standard is not applicable, given the only structure on the property is a ground-mounted cabinet and no signage is proposed. J. Private, public and private utilities. All power and fiber utilities will run underground. The proposal does not include any other utilities. K. Outdoor Storage. This standard is not applicable, given no outdoor storage is proposed on the site. L. Design Standards for Commercial Districts. This standard is not applicable, given no structures are proposed on the site and the tower is not located in the commercial district. M. Preservation of Historic and Archaeological Resources. This standard is not applicable, given the site does not include any historic or archaeological resources. N. Municipal Capacity and State Agency Review. This standard is not applicable, given the, the project is not located in the designated growth area. Conditions of Approval. 1. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the plan set shall be revised to address the modifications required as part of the board's deliberation and stipulated in the findings above. Plan set to be reviewed and approved by planning department staff. 2. A pre-construction meeting is required prior to the start of construction. Meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, the site contractor, and utility company representatives, if applicable. The pre-construction meeting is to be coordinated through the planning department. 3. No occupancy or full or partial, partial occupancy shall be issued by the code enforcement officer until the town engineer, town planner, or their designee are satisfied that the property has been constructed in accordance with the approved site plan and conditions of approval or that the town has received a performance guarantee for the completion of specific outstanding site elements within a specified timeframe. 4. Final Approval Shall Expire One Year From The Date Of Such Approval Unless The Applicant Has Started Substantial Construction. The town planner may extend final approval for one additional year for good cause, provided a written request for extension is submitted before the expiration of the approval. At his option, town planner may refer any request for extension to the planning board for decision. That is the motion, folks. Thank you.
I, I second that, and I'm glad I didn't have to read it.
Anybody need to hear it one more time? Any discussion? Motion and a second. All in favor? I assure you that is unanimous. And again, thank you, everyone.
Thanks very much.
So we have a tiny bit more meeting to go here, folks, so just bear with us. Number nine, staff report.
I have a few items to report on. We do have a Mylar that needs to be signed for the Gateway Commons subdivision amendment. It's over there behind Jay. We'll set that up after the meeting. A little update on the Larrabee Farm Contract Zone Amendment. There was a joint hearing held with council last week here in this room, and the next step in the prelim, next step in the process is a preliminary approval with the board, so we'll be seeing that project soon. And there was a pre-construction meeting for Scarborough Downs Phase 2, or the Innovation Districts, in early September, so they're, they're well underway up there in the northern end of the Downs. And that's what I have. I don't know if you guys have anything.
Thank you. Administrative Amendment Report.
There was one administrative amendment at the Oak Hill Plaza. They, we, staff approved a small regraded area with picnic tables for employees, very slight amendment. That's it.
No correspondence. Planning Board Comments?
Roger.
I'm just curious on the cabinets to go. Do they have to come before us anymore, or they just move along?
They've moved past the temporary sales trailer idea, and they actually have a pre-con meeting scheduled for next week, so they're, they're moving along.
Okay.
Any other planning board comments? With that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second? Rachel?
Second.